SRNT attendees and welcome to this pre-conference session from FDA Center for Tobacco Products on programmatic updates and activities. I am Mitch Zeller, Director of the Center for Tobacco Products. And for presentations today, I am joined by Todd Cecil, Deputy Director for Regulatory Management in our Office of Science, and Kathy Crosby, who is Director of our Office of Health Communication and Education. Here's what we're going to cover in today's session. I will start with some broad updates from the center covering everything from COVID-19 to updates on regulations and guidances, compliance and enforcement activities, the latest data on youth tobacco use, and application review and plans for review. Todd will follow with an update from the Office of Science that will obviously go into a lot more detail, and he'll be followed by Kathy from our Office of Health Communication and Education with an update on her office's activities. Our three presentations are prerecorded. When the three presentations are over, we will then have a live Q and A session where we will be joined by Matt Holman, who is Director of the Center's Office of Science. So let me start by talking about the impact of COVID-19 on the center's work. Like everyone, we have had to face new and unprecedented challenges as the pandemic was unfolding last year, and it did have an impact on the programmatic work of the center. Our priority was to protect the health and the well-being of staff. And so in early 2020, we issued what is known as a partial stop-work order to those entities that we have contracts with at the state level that were responsible for inspections of vape shops and compliance checks in tobacco retail outlets. What that meant was that all in-person tobacco retail inspections were temporarily suspended. However, we were able to continue all of the monitoring and all of the surveillance that we can safely do remotely for websites and publications and social media. More recently, we have begun working with the states and with our contractors to see if it's possible to begin resuming a limited number of those physical inspections. Obviously, this depends on a lot of factors and moving considerations that will vary by the state and local level, starting with what is the incidence and what is the rate of hospitalization for a particular locality? And what are the applicable guidances that we've gotten either from CDC or state or local governments? We look at that map of the states that is down to the county level, and we look at the green and the yellow and the red. And where there is yellow and green, and we have a contractor that is prepared to resume inspections, then that is the goal. And we hope to be able to resume more and more of those in 2021. Now, to help with the challenges that were posed by the pandemic, challenges on both industry and FDA, there were two cases where we went back to court for extensions for key regulatory actions. The first was to move the deadline for the submission of applications for deemed tobacco products from May 11th until September 9th of 2020. And the second was in the cigarette health warning case, and there actually have been two extensions there. The first extending the date of the effective date for the final cigarette health warning rule to October 16th of 2021, and then more recently to January 14th, 2022. I can assure you all that despite these challenges, the center continues to work vigorously to protect the public health. And I think that you'll see from all of the programmatic updates that you're getting today that we have been very busy over the last year. A few words about what we know about the evidence regarding COVID-19 and tobacco use. The data clearly shows that compared to never smokers, that cigarette smoking absolutely increases the risk of more severe illness from COVID. And that could result in increased hospitalization, the need to be in an intensive care unit, and even an increased risk of death. We know the risks with cigarette smoking. It starts with the smoke causing inflammation and cell damage throughout the body, which can weaken the immune system and making the body less able to fight off disease. So you can imagine how cigarette smokers would be at a greater risk of more severe illness if unfortunately they contracted COVID. By contrast, with e-cigarettes, even though we know that e-cigarettes can expose the lungs to toxic chemicals, we do not know whether those exposures increase the risk for e-cigarette users to either getting COVID or getting more severe cases if someone tests positive. We know that there's never been a better time to quit, especially during this ongoing global pandemic. And I know I'm preaching to the choir here at SRNT, but of course, there are several FDA-approved smoking cessation products, from prescription and over-the-counter nicotine replacement therapy to prescription medications without nicotine. But more recently, we approved the first device for cessation. It uses deep TMS or transcranial magnetic stimulation, where electromagnetic pulses are sent to stimulate neurons in the brain, which can reduce cravings for tobacco and increase cognitive control. Of note, when it comes to e-cigarettes and other ends products, though we hear the anecdotal reports of how they have helped some smokers quit to date, none of these products have been approved by FDA as a cessation aid. So let me turn to the first programmatic update, and that's in the area of regulations and guidances. And I'll start with an update on our final rule for cigarette health warnings. March of last year, we issued the final rule that will require new health warnings on all cigarette packs and cigarette ads, the goal being to promote greater public health understanding of the negative health consequences of cigarette smoking. And the March 2020 final rule followed on the proposed rule that we had issued in August of 2019. The final rule goes into effect January 14th of 2022. Recall that this was the result of two extensions of the effective date of the final rule because of COVID. But beginning January of next year, the warnings are going to be required to appear prominently on packages and in ads. These are mockups, but on packs, the warnings will occupy the top 50% of the front and rear panels, and in cigarette ads, at least 20% of the area at the top of the advertisements. These are the 11 warnings. Each warning is a combination of a text statement and photorealistic color images that depict some of the lesser-known but still serious health risks of smoking, including the adverse impact of smoking on things like fetal growth, cardiac disease, and diabetes. Let me now talk about a guidance that we issued this past October that we think would be of particular interest to SRNT members, and its principles for designing and conducting perception and intention studies. And these are studies that could be submitted as part of tobacco product applications for modified risk tobacco products, pre-market tobacco product applications, or substantial equivalence applications, but also inform the agency's thinking about tobacco products. These kinds of studies can be used to assess things like an individual's perception of products, or their understanding of product labeling, modified risk information, and intentions to use tobacco products. The public comment period on this guidance closed on December 28th, 2020, and we are currently reviewing the comments that came in. I know that there is a lot of interest in our pre-market tobacco product application and substantial equivalence final rules. These were rules that displayed in the federal register on January 19th, but did not publish in the federal register. And for those of you that were able to peek at the rules for the one day that they were on display, you see that they contain the minimum requirements for the content and format of applications, and also explain review processes for reviewing PMTA and SE reports or applications. With the change in administrations, an executive order came down on day one, January 20th of the new administration, and these final rules, along with a bunch of other final rules, were withdrawn. I know that there's a lot of interest in the current status of these final rules, and really, all that I can share at this point is that we are working closely with the new administration to advance appropriate regulations and policies that were the subject of withdrawal by this executive order and that are in line with our public health mission. So stay tuned, and when we have more information on this, we will be happy to share it. The next area for a programmatic update is our work in compliance and enforcement. Since we began our enforcement program over a decade ago, we've actually completed over 1.2 million inspections of tobacco retailers. And these compliance and enforcement actions can result in either a warning letter, a civil money penalty, or a no tobacco sale order if we see violations. Let me briefly explain what each of those are. Typically, for a first violation that we see, we send the responsible entity, retailer, manufacturer, whoever, a warning letter. And it is a letter that points out the violation and gives the responsible party a certain amount of time to respond to us, to tell us what steps they will be taking to remedy the violations. For retailers, we've had to issue over 98,000 warning letters, and over 11,500 of those have been for ends products. Civil money penalties for tobacco retailers start with a second and subsequent violation. And a civil money penalty is basically a fine, a monetary fine that gets paid to the federal government, not to FDA. Goes into general funds of the federal government. And unfortunately, over the years, we've had to seek civil money penalties in over 25,000 cases, over 2,000 of which related to ends products. And then for retailers that simply aren't getting the message and have had at least five violations in a 36-month period of time, the statute enables us to go before an administrative law judge and seek what the law calls a no tobacco sale order. And unfortunately, in over 200 cases, we've sought the ability to prevent individual retailers from selling tobacco products of any kind for a specified period of time because of these multiple violations of the law in a relatively short period of time. When it comes to ends products, we have articulated what our enforcement priorities are in the form of guidance. And since February 6th of last year, our priorities started with any flavored cartridge-based end product other than a tobacco or menthol-flavored product, as well as any ends products regardless of flavor or type, for which the manufacturer has failed to take or is failing to take adequate measures to prevent minors access, as well as any ends products, again, regardless of type or flavor, if there's evidence that the product is targeted to minors or likely to promote use by minors. And ever since that September 9th, 2020 deadline came and went, for deemed products that had to submit applications, we have an enforcement priority against ends products that continue to be sold for which no application was submitted. And flavored disposable ends products are also now an enforcement priority in light of new data, including data from the 2020 National Youth Tobacco Survey about the popularity of those products with young people. More details on the data to come. Let me walk you through the types of enforcement actions that we have taken over the past year, starting with action against unauthorized youth appealing ends products. And just in the last year, we've issued over 260 warning letters to both online and brick-and-mortar manufacturers and retailers that were selling those unauthorized flavored cartridge-based products. This included warning letters to outlets such as 7-Eleven and Shell. We've had to issue six warning letters to firms that were involved in the sale of unauthorized ends products that targeted young people or that were likely to promote the use by young people. And here, we were concerned about the manner in which these products were designed and labeled. And we've also had to send, just in the last year, about a dozen warning letters to companies that were deliberately selling unauthorized e-liquid products to resemble the packaging of food products that would be appealing to youth because of their resemblance to products like candy, or popcorn, or cookies, et cetera. And here are some examples of the products that received warning letters from FDA over the past year. An ends product purposely designed to resemble a smartwatch, a portable video game system, and food products. And this is just a sampling of the types of warning letters that have gone out over the past year. We've also taken enforcement action against disposable and menthol-flavored ends. Last September, we issued three warning letters. One to a company selling a very popular brand of disposable e-cigarettes, and two warning letters to companies that were selling illegally marketed unauthorized menthol-flavored e-liquids that you see depicted in this image here. These warning letters were part of the concern that we have about the rise in young people's use of disposable e-cigarettes and the popularity of menthol-flavored e-cigarettes with kids. And they followed on the heels of warning letters that we had sent in July of last year for the illegal marketing of disposable e-cigarettes that included the very popular product, Puff Bar. More recently, in a joint action with the Customs and Border Protection Officers at Dallas-Fort Worth International Airport, there was a seizure of over 33,000 units of e-cigarettes, and these were individual disposable flavored cartridges purposely designed to resemble the Puff Bar brand. That was just last month. Also last month, we began to issue warning letters to companies that were selling products and never submitted an application to us. Last month, in two tranches, 19 warning letters went out, and these are the first sets of warning letters, and expect that we will continue to issue these kinds of warning letters on a rolling basis going forward. Here's the latest that we know on youth tobacco use. Starting with release of the 2020 National Youth Tobacco Survey findings, I think everybody knows that last September, with the Centers for Disease Control, we had a release of the youth e-cigarette data from the 2020 NYTS, and more recently in December, a second publication on the data for all tobacco products. Here's the top line from the 2020 NYTS on e-cigarettes. Todd is going to go into much more detail on this in his presentation shortly. The good news from the 2020 NYTS when it comes to e-cigarettes, 1.8 million fewer young people using e-cigarettes in the past 30 days compared to 2019. The bad news, that meant that there were still 3.6 million young people currently using e-cigarettes, a level that we first saw in 2018 when this was declared to be an epidemic. The other results of concern, a notable increase in the use of disposable e-cigarettes by current e-cigarette users, and the reality that eight out of 10 current e-cigarette users used flavored products. My final programmatic update will be in the area of application review. I think everybody knows that for certain deemed products that were on the market, September 9th last year was the deadline for applications to come in. And for companies that got their applications in on time, and this is all under the terms of a court order, we would be able to continue to exercise enforcement discretion. Remember, these are all products lacking a marketing authorization, so they are technically illegally on the market. But if the companies got their applications in on time, then we could continue to exercise enforcement discretion up until September 9th, 2021, unless, of course, we had taken a negative action earlier than that. It's a 12-month period of enforcement discretion that starts from the day the application came in. We know that there is a lot of interest in a list of products that were the subject of timely submitted applications, and we are committed to posting such a list for products that were on the market as of the effective date of the final deeming rule, August 8th, 2016, and are still on the market, and that were the subject of a timely submitted application. However, before we can make this list available, we have to ensure that publishing this kind of information complies with federal disclosure laws and regulations, and that remains a work in progress because of the enormous volume of applications that we receive for a very, very, very large number of products. One update on premium cigars, and under the terms of a different court order that came down August of last year, the agency is not going to be enforcing the pre-market review requirement against manufacturers of premium cigars if they did not submit their applications by September 9th, 2020. And for purposes of that court order, a premium cigar has to meet all of the criteria that you see listed on this slide. This only applies to premium cigars. All other cigars that are subject to the September 9th deadline had to get their applications in. As I said, we received an extremely large volume when it came to both applications and the number of products that were the subject of those applications. And we are going to strive to review as many applications as possible during that 12-month period for review under the terms of that court order. We will allocate some of our reviewing resources to ensure that we're focusing on the products with the greatest public health impact, but in the spirit of fairness to all companies, regardless of size, any company that got their application in on time will have an equal shot at being selected for review. And given the intense level of interest in all this, we absolutely plan to update the public on how review is going, especially as we refine our plans for review and allocation of reviewing resources. A couple of key marketing decisions over the past year. In July of 2020, we issued a modified risk tobacco product order for the iCost tobacco heating system, and these products received what's known as an exposure modification order, which permits the marketing of the product as containing a reduced level or presenting reduced exposure to substances of concern. Under the terms of the order that we issued, the company can state that the iCost system heats tobacco but doesn't burn it, that this significantly reduces the production of harmful and potentially harmful chemicals, and that scientific studies have shown that switching completely from conventional cigarettes to the iCost system significantly reduces exposure to harmful or potentially harmful chemicals. Now, this is an exposure modification order. The sponsor also sought but did not receive a risk modification order, a risk reduction order. We concluded that the science did not support a risk reduction claim, but it did support an exposure modification or exposure reduction claim. And more recently, in December, we issued a supplemental PMTA authorization for the iCost 3 system holder and charger. These were minor design differences from the previous version of the iCost product that we had authorized under the PMTA pathway in April of 2019, changes to things like how the holder gets inserted into the charger, charging connections, et cetera. But this was a scientific review based upon the supplemental application that was received, where we were able to conclude that the modifications did not raise new concerns related to safety, health effects, et cetera. That concludes my presentation. I thank you so much for your time and attention. And on the slide is information that you can use to contact us, whether it's to report any adverse experiences that you're aware of with tobacco products, or other ways to reach us and to stay in contact with us. And with that, I will turn it over to Todd, and I look forward to the live Q and A session. Thanks so much.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us for this FDA special symposium. My name is Todd Cecil, and I am the Deputy Director for Regulatory Management in the Office of Science. And today, I'm going to present the Office of Science update. I've broken today's talk down into three major sections. First, the application review. Second, the tobacco regulatory science. And finally, how the science is used to inform our regulatory activities. Our first up, tobacco application. As you are likely aware, FDA required the submission of all newly deemed products by September 2020. In September 2020, we did receive, and before 2020, we received a vast number of applications, and those applications far exceed our ability to process within the one-year timeframe that is allowed to us. However, FDA is striving to review as many applications as possible during this one-year time period, and we will allocate review resources to ensure we focus on products with the greatest public health impact while committing to fairness for all companies regardless of size. So what does FDA need to be able to find a product to be either appropriate for the protection of public health, or find that it is not appropriate for the protection of public health? So FDA needs four main things. The first is a complete application with adequate information for the subject products or the products that are subject of that application. A sound and consistent process with which to evaluate these applications. A strong diverse set of reviewers dedicated to the protection of public health, and finally, regulatory science support. We'll talk about that at some length in a few moments. So first, our application process has three major phases. We have phase one, which is an acceptance process. And actually, before we get to the acceptance process, we still have to bring all of these applications into a form that we can actually review them. So we do all of our reviews electronically, so anything submitted in paper will have to be scanned, and will have to then be uploaded onto the computer. Those things that arrive in CDs or in drives, hard drives, or what have you, will have to be virus-checked and evaluated to make sure that they are safe for placement on our website or our internal systems, and they'll be uploaded. And finally, those things that are submitted through the portal with a spreadsheet are able to be picked up and evaluated very rapidly. Unfortunately, very few have been so submitted. After that has occurred, and once we've now got it into our system, we then step into the acceptance process and then determine whether the application is in English and has sufficient information that we can evaluate it. We then go on to a phase two. Now, phase two, depending upon the type of review we're doing, whether it's a pre-market application, PMTA, or it's a substantial equivalence evaluation, SE, we have slightly different steps that happen here in phase two. But let's, for the purposes of the discussion, talk about PMTAs. So the PMTAs are going to end up with a filing step. And in the filing step, we're going to ensure that all of the information that is statutorily required has been provided. Those things that are not present causes this product to not be an acceptable filing, and we will then send a refuse-to-file letter back to the applicant. So if all of those things are present, then we go on into phase three. And phase three is the review and action phase. There's a scientific review, and there may be letters that go back and forth for us to determine or to obtain additional information and to clarify things that are difficult to understand before we move on to the action step. So we, of course, knew in advance that there would be a deadline coming up in September, and we spent a lot of time trying to find ways of speeding up our process. Our PMTA process has been very slow and has been very data-intensive. Of course, we want to ensure that we have the very best decisions that we can possibly make with the data that's been provided to us. So we sat down and looked at our processes and tried to figure out how we could streamline and revamp the PMTA, the SE, and the EX. and revamp the PMTA, the SE, and the EX program. So one of the things we've done is we increased the number of technical project leads, the individuals who actually lead this project through its review process. We removed redundancies in clearance and also in the review by defining swim lanes so that each reviewer is reviewing certain components of the application and not trying to overlap their colleagues. We've defined the role in program-specific training and provided that training in advance of the application September 9, and we have repeated that training as we go. We've developed and enhanced guidances and templates and memos to try and make it easier for the reviewers to move forward with their evaluations, make decisions, and provide the information in a format that the TPL can move forward with a recommendation. We've compressed our PMTA review timelines substantially. We've decreased our response times to EX and SE deficiency letters, and that was necessitated by the timeframe that we have to be able to evaluate, provide a scientific evaluation, receive feedback from an applicant, and then make a final decision. So to make that all happen within this one-year timeframe, we've had to reduce the amount of time that an applicant has to respond to questions. And we are, of course, tending only to issue one deficiency letter, and that we are only sending one deficiency letter because of that time constraint that we talked about just a moment ago. And finally, we've created a complete triage plan for all of the pre-market programs, and that triage plan will be presented at some point in the not-too-distant future on our website so that people can see how these things work out. It was a fair, impartial process that it was doing everything we can to ensure that we are reviewing the most products possible and the ones that have the greatest impact So we've addressed the first two items, our complete application, that's obviously the sort of things we need, and our process. We've certainly tried to find a way to improve our process. So we obviously need, next is to talk about a strong diverse set of reviewers. And so we've got that in the Office of Science. In Office of Science, we have over 450 scientists and program staff. We have expertise across a wide range of scientific disciplines, including epidemiology and chemistry, behavioral pharmacology, toxicology, statistics, engineering, medical, environmental. As you can see, it's a wide range of individuals who are reviewing these applications. We, of course, by hiring a diverse staff with very strong scientific backgrounds, they've enabled us to increase the speed with which we evaluate and increase the confidence that we have in the decisions that are being made. So we've addressed the first three items on this list. The fourth item I have not really gotten to yet, and that's the regulatory science support. And when I talk about regulatory science support, I'm talking about published, peer-reviewed scientific literature, because that helps define the standards of knowledge. And the standards of knowledge are what we use to make decisions about whether or not a product is appropriate for the protection of public health or not, to provide a basis for comparison. Those studies provide us with comparators that we can use in addition to those that are being submitted by an applicant. And provides boundaries of public health that we need to use to make a determination on a PPH. Clearly, tobacco regulatory science is very important to FDA. However, we are far too small to be able to conduct all of the research that we need to fulfill our mission. Fortunately, there is a group of dedicated researchers that we can encourage and support to help us make the best decisions possible. There are a variety of funding pathways that FDA has used to support this fundamental and applied research, including contract research, TRSP research in partnership with NIH, and the NYTS study in partnership with CDC, and of course, our signature program, the PATH Initiative. When you look across all of these programs, you can see that there has been a significant impact from CTP-funded research. And you see that in this graph here, where you see the number of projects has changed over the years but has generally increased, and the associated number of publications continues to rise, even though last year, 2018, there was a downturn that is anomalous, and we see that coming back up in 2019 and in 2020. So our funding has had a significant impact on the tobacco science. We have, in fact, seen some 10,000 publications of CTP-funded research. Thirty-four of the most highly cited CTP-funded publications were each cited over 100 times. And 98% of our cited publications were cited within three years of publication, meaning that we are publishing information that is critical and timely. The median number of citations per CTP-funded article was 10, and so there is, there are obviously some that are really highly reviewed and some that are not, but clearly, CTP-funded publications have a significant impact on the field of regulatory science. What example of FDA-funded research is the NYTS study. And in September, FDA and CDC jointly released findings of the 2020 National Youth Tobacco Survey for youth e-cigarette use. And in December, the findings were released on the use of all tobacco products. And this study has shown that there is a decrease in tobacco use in grouped categories among high school students. So you can see here, we have 2019 in red, so any tobacco products, any combustible products, and multiple tobacco products. And you can see there's a decrease across the board, and the largest decrease being in any tobacco products. Combustible products are down 3%, and multiple tobacco products are down 2%. We also looked at the decrease in tobacco use among individual products among high school students. And again, 2019 is in red and covers e-cigarettes, cigars, smokeless tobacco, and cigarettes. And again, we can see decreases across the board with a substantive decrease in e-cigarette usage, also a reduction in cigars, smokeless tobacco, and cigarettes. So let us go ahead and take a moment to focus on the e-cigarette reduction. As we dig a little deeper, we want to take a look at one specific type of e-cigarette, and this is the disposable e-cigarettes. And you can see the disposable e-cigarettes in 2019 were not a huge source of or use item for teenagers. But we can see in 2020 that number rose dramatically, where we see an increase of over 20% for high school students and an increase of 13 or 12, 13% for middle school students. Both of those are tremendously concerning. We also have seen high levels of flavor use. Fruit, mint, menthol, and candy are among the most common, and eight out of 10 current youth e-cigarette users are using flavored e-cigarettes. We also see a sign of nicotine addiction. Frequency of use, in 2020, 38.9% of high school current e-cig users used e-cigarettes frequently, or frequently is on 20 or more of the past 30 days. And also concerning is that 22.5% of high school students indicated that they were daily users of e-cigarettes. Okay, I'm now going to take a moment to shift gears a little bit. We've talked about some of the places where FDA-funded research has had a significant impact on the decision-making and our knowledge about ends use and other cigarette usage. Now I want to talk to you a little bit about another major study that we are involved with, and that is the population assessment of tobacco and health, the PATH study. So our special collection, Wave 5.5, is adapting to the COVID-19 pandemic. We're looking at nationally representative samples of youth and young adults ages 13 to 19. It was launched in December 2019 with in-person data collection, but due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the studies were paused in March and restarted again in July with a switch to telephone-only data collection. Questions have been added on COVID-19 and tobacco use, and those surveys were completed in December of 2020. A new special collection is also being produced, and that is the PATH Study Adult Tobacco Survey, or the ATS. It examines adult tobacco use in the time of COVID with focus on ends, products, and cigarettes, including questions on COVID-19. Nationally representative sub-sample of adults aged 20 to older, and it was conducted in September 2020 through December through telephone only. So what is next? When is the next data collection? So Wave 6 is going to begin, launch in 2021. The data that's available, of course, data from Waves 1 through 4 and 1/2 are available at Series 606 or this address, you'll have access to this. Wave 5, collected December 2018 through November 2019, will be available in 2021. Wave 5.5 and the PATH ATS will be available in 2022. You can learn more about the PATH Study recent findings in the PATH Symposium 13 in the SRNT 2021. There's also going to be a live Q and A session at Podium 50 at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, February 27. So please, if you're interested in those, make sure that you are there at that Q and A session and that you go to the PATH Symposium. So let's go ahead again and take a breath and step back a little bit and say, now we've talked about tobacco regulatory science, or at least the funding of the studies that help us understand the science of tobacco and its effects upon the population. So the way we're defining tobacco regulatory science here is that all stakeholders have the opportunity to contribute to regulatory science. It's important for broad stakeholder engagement, and it's important the coordination across stakeholders to maximize scientific achievement. So regulatory science is different than tobacco regulatory science. Where regulatory science is looking at the scientifically valid techniques, tools, and models to evaluate products, and they inform the regulatory action to promote optimal public health outcomes. And so tobacco regulatory science informs FDA's regulatory authority. It recognizes that tobacco products cannot be regulated using FDA's traditional, safe and effective standard, that is, used in all of the pharmaceutical side. And it enables FDA to best assess the net population-level health impacts. So our science-based review of tobacco products, policy decisions are complex and involve data from a breadth of scientific disciplines, and we talked about that earlier, and here we are again with chemistry and engineering. Now, it's not simply that we need to hear information from chemistry, engineering, pharmacology, epidemiology, social science, toxicology, et cetera. The findings of the chemistry reviewer have an effect on the engineering reviewer. The findings of the engineering reviewer affect the medical reviewers. The chemistry also affects toxicology, and toxicology looks at exposure, and the exposure affects the pharmacology, and it affects the decisions of the medical group. So all of the decisions that we make and all of the discussions that we have are interdisciplinary, and they are in a very compressed timeframe. So we need to ensure that there is adequate support for all of these disciplines to be able to be effective in making the decisions that we have to make. We can see the effect of FDA-funded research on our decision-making through comments that were made in the rules and guidances that were published in the 2019, for instance. In this case, we see that 40 CTP-funded publications were referenced in a combination of our rules and guidances. There were a total of 409 in that group, but that's still a, you know, 10% of those references are actually coming out of CTP-funded sources. We also see that there were four researchers that made comments with references in the rules and guidance, and there were six T-Course trainees that also made comments with references in our rules and guidances. We do want to continue to encourage researchers and T-Course trainees that have a substantive opportunity to speak to a rule or guidance, to provide that information. Now, if we take a look directly at the research and publications that CTP has funded directly and indirectly, you can see that this is a data collected from FY 2010 to 2019. On the left-hand side of this chart, you can see the projects by research domain, and on the right-hand side are the number of projects or, excuse me, publications by research domain. So you can look through and see the types of research that we have funded and the publications that have come from that information. So you see, of course, knowledge attitudes and behaviors being the most funded and also with the greatest number of publications out there. But you can also look down and see there are many other areas of research that are important to us, addiction being one of them, 117, for instance, leading to about 151 papers. So this is one way to look for areas that FDA needs help in, and so as you start to consider how to focus your research efforts, this hopefully gives you some idea of where you might want to look for FDA funding. Another way to look at it is by tobacco product. And so you can see, again, on the left-hand side are the projects, and on the right are the publications. And then if you go down through the individual types of tobacco products, you can see smokeless, tobacco and snooze, for instance, there's 117 projects that lead to 166 publications. And so this gives you some way to look at what is highest priority or has been over the past 10 years, the fact that e-cigarettes is a relatively new product on the marketplace. To see that e-cigarettes are there with 203 projects indicates that it is very important to us to understand what e-cigarettes are doing and how they affect the public health. And obviously, there's an awful lot of papers that come out of that, and we are using those data. So let's take a step back and look again at an application or a case study, if you like. And so here is the news feed that came out in 2019. FDA permits sale of two new reduced nicotine cigarettes through the PMTA pathway. So let's take a look behind the headline and see what it is that we're talking about and how the regulatory science has affected our decision-making process. So that headline was about the 22nd Century PMTA Review. And we take a look at that pre-market application, we can see that there were obviously a number of various reviews that happened. We did product composition, design, and manufacturing, toxicology, individual health impact, population health, product labeling, consumer comprehension, and market planning. And CTP-funded research is cited throughout this PMTA. So in December 2019, FDA authorized two combusted felted products. They authorized this based upon the determination that these products were appropriate for the protection of public health because of the potential to reduce nicotine dependence in individual adult smokers, who may also benefit from a decreased nicotine exposure and cigarette consumption. Non-smokers, including youth, were found to be unlikely to start using this product, and non-smokers who experiment were found to be less likely to be addicted than people who experimented with conventional cigarettes. Now, this was one of the fastest reviews we had done, and it took us, to complete the review, 180 days, and the orders were issued within one year. So some examples of the literature that was cited include these three publications, and there were many, many more. So I think that you can see, these are all FDA-funded, but you can see your work here. So we want to reinforce the fact that your work and your publications have a direct impact upon our ability to review products and determine whether or not they are appropriate for the protection of public health. In addition to those publications, there are other ways that we can obtain your feedback that is important to us, and that is the safety reporting process that we have. So reporting on tobacco-related adverse events, if you find an adverse event to any of the products that you're working with, those can be reported, and we very much would love to have them reported. If you have explosions in the laboratory, if you have leakage that causes risks to users for an laboratory, if you have leakage that causes risks to users for an ends product, if there are other adverse events that occur and as part of your research or as part of your interactions with these devices or these materials, that can be reported and should be reported. Finally, we want to say that everything that we do in FDA is data-driven. All of our rulemaking, all of our communications and education, all of our application reviews, and of course, our compliance are all done based upon the data that is collected by regulatory scientists in the vast majority of the cases. So we want to first commend you and also second say, please continue to do what you're doing. We are reliant upon you. In conclusion, I want to walk through what we've talked about today. We've talked about the science-based approach and how it's crucial to our regulatory programs and missions. We've talked about the regulatory science research and how it's critical that the work that you're doing impacts our understanding of manufacturing, marketing and distribution of these products. We continue to strengthen our research program, and we continue to desire broad stakeholder involvement in tobacco research. I want to take this opportunity to inform you about a number of career opportunities that are available at CTP. We're looking for motivated individuals with seeking a meaningful mission-driven employment in the field of public health. We are looking across all of disciplines we've talked about today. We're looking for those straight out of school and those with the experience as well. If you're interested in coming to work at FDA and helping to promote public health, we, you may want to stop by the CTP virtual booth, or you may want to visit us at FDA.gov, at CTPjobs, or at USAjobs.gov as well. There's also some NIH TRSP funding opportunities available. And there's this whole series of them here that I wanted to make available. Please feel free to follow up on these and talk to us in those two places that I mentioned earlier. Finally, I'd like to leave you with our contact information and thank you so much for your attention. And I'd like to turn this over to our next speaker.
Hello, this is Kathy Crosby, the Director of the Office of Health Communication and Education at CTP. Thanks so much for being interested in hearing our programmatic updates regarding our youth prevention campaigns. I'm happy to share that I believe the real cost is making a significant impact to prevent youth vaping. For those of you that are familiar with us, you know that we follow a very comprehensive evidence-based approach to creative development. The first phase is really the planning phase. And in this phase, we have three different stages of research and I'm going to touch base on highlights of all three of those stages. Then we go into creative production with the ads that we believe have shown promise to really affect behavior change when it comes to tobacco use. Part of this then is once the work is produced, that we develop a sophisticated paid media plan that's designed for the ads to reach at-risk teens where they are. And then the third phase is the campaign evaluation phase. And I'm also going to spend the majority of my time talking about what we've learned today through the evaluation. CTP is constantly conducting research among youth. And in this round of qualitative formative research, we heard some really compelling insights from teens. First, the thought of vaping toxic metals into their lungs was really concerning to them. Another compelling insight was that teens were really starting to understand and see and experience both the physical cost of addiction and the emotional costs. There was really a compelling insight that nicotine dependence could cause you to do things that you wouldn't normally do or be someone that you didn't want to be. With these insights in mind, we developed a large body of new vaping prevention ads, eight of them in total. And all ads were filmed right before the travel shutdown due to COVID. So we have a large body of work that was running in 2020 and new spots that have yet to air coming in 2021. I'm going to share with you three ads today. The first two really drill down on the issue that vaping can deliver toxic metals into your lungs, which can damage them. And then I'm going to show you one from our Addiction Isn't Pretty series that really gets at the heart of what your dependence to nicotine will do. So we're going to share Scary Enough, Macroscopic Metals and Toilet, if you can please roll them.
If you vape, you could inhale intoxication metals into your lungs. To show how scary that is, we made Metal Monsters. With special effects that show metal particles being in hell. And music, music that would make your heart race. But nothing is as scary as the facts. Vaping can deliver toxic metals like nickel and lead into your lungs. That's metal in your lungs.
If you vape nicotine, you could be inhaling toxic metals like nickel, chromium and lead.
As you can see, the perceived ad effectiveness scores continue to be very high. So let me just refresh our memory about the perceived ad effectiveness scores. Our post-market copy testing is conducted with youth to really assess the overall level of ad performance, as well as the potential for any unintended consequences. The perceived ad effectiveness scores consist of average values of six receptivity items, including, is this ad worth remembering? Does it grab your attention? Is it powerful? Is it informative? Is it meaningful? Is it convincing? Each of these ads is initially evaluated on a five-point scale to garner the results. Perceived ad effectiveness scores are quite positive across all of the ads that were tested, and they're very consistent and in line with other real cost ads. We also make sure to look at subgroups by age, gender, tobacco use status for each ad, and there were no notable differences in perceived ad effectiveness scores. So as I noted, these are very high score for us. And I showed you three of these spots today. Macroscopic metals, which received a score of 4.22. Scary enough, which received a score of 4.29. And then I jumped over to our Addiction Isn't Pretty concept toilet with a score of 4.20. These are all really high. Anything above a three gives us the confidence to believe that these ads might make a difference in shifting knowledge attitudes and beliefs. And so we're really very excited about this entire body of work. Now let's shift gears to talk about our campaign evaluation. So overall, the evaluation of the real cost, this is a nationally representative longitudinal sample. Baseline sample consists of over 4,000 youth between the ages of 11 and 16. The data for baseline was collected all in person. Follow-up one was in person and online, and follow-up two and three are all online as a result of COVID. So what I'll be reporting to you today is information from our baseline data collection, which was conducted in October of 2019. Our follow-up one evaluation, which was conducted between April and July of 2019, and our follow-up two evaluation, which was conducted between April and July of 2020. And I'll be sharing the results of follow-up two. We're also in follow-up three, which is currently in field right now. So how we've been doing. According to follow-up two, brand awareness remains very high for the real cost, with 75% of youth recalling seeing the brand, the real cost brand logo. Importantly, ad awareness is also very high, with 79% of youth recalling seeing the real cost vaping prevention ads one or more times. And if you want to look at the individual ad awareness, we pulled out highlights of just one ad, Epidemic, which has almost 57% of youth reporting that they have seen the ad. So that's awareness and receptivity. Let's now take a look at self-reported exposure, which is associated with belief change. Self-reported exposure to the Epidemic ad, just one of the ads, was significantly associated with higher levels of agreement to three of the nine belief statements targeted by the ad. Those are vaping can cause irreversible lung damage, vaping is an epidemic, and vapes contain formaldehyde. This figure shows the slope of the dose response curve, which represents the strength of the relationship between exposure to the ad and each belief. On the very left are the predicted agreement levels to the beliefs if everyone in the sample had no exposure. On the right are the predicted agreement levels if everyone in the survey had very often awareness levels. The vertical line represents the average or observed levels of awareness to Epidemic in our data and the observed agreement with the beliefs. So let's just take a look at that top line, which is vaping can cause irreversible lung damage. What this is saying is that on average, 75% of teens saw the Epidemic ad at least rarely, and agreed with the statement vaping can cause irreversible lung damage. This ad is called Rehacked. And self-exposure to the Rehacked ad was significantly associated with higher levels of agreement to three of the eight belief statements targeted by the ad, those being nicotine and vapes can hack your brain, it can reprogram your brain, and it can change your brain. This figure shows the slope of the Dofus response curve, which represents the strength of the relationship between exposure to the ad and each belief. Here again, these scores are the predicted agreement levels to the beliefs if everyone in the sample had no exposure. And these are the predicted agreement levels if everyone in the ad or everyone in the survey said that they had seen the ads very often. This vertical line represents the average or observed level of Rehacked in our data to the observed agreement with the beliefs. So let's just pull out the top line, that nicotine and vapes changes your brain. What this is saying is that on average, roughly 75% of teens saw Rehacked at least rarely, and agreed that nicotine changes your brain. So overall, we're happy with these results, but we know that a higher dose, the higher the dose we can get, the higher the effect we will have. So FDA's efforts really show promise in increasing ends risk perceptions. And just to recap, our pre-market copy testing results show high levels of ad receptivity with perceived ad effectiveness scores ranging from 3.91 to 4.29, some of the highest of any of our ads ever tested. In-market awareness of the real cost brand and vape prevention ads remains high, with 75% of teens recalling that they're seeing the brand, and 79% of teens recall seeing one or more ads. Increased levels of exposure to the real cost were associated with more positive changes in campaign targeted beliefs. And the models indicate that increased exposure to ads would have led to even larger observed effects, which is something that we're obviously going to work on. So good news overall. Ends beliefs and risk perceptions continue to evolve and evolve in the right direction. So 29 of the 34 items that we are assessing youth beliefs about vaping continue to change in the direction of increased perceptions of risk and improved knowledge of harms. And just to pull out four of those examples, and these pertain to some of the ads that I've shared with you today. If I vape, I will inhale metal particles. This belief statement increased 30% from baseline. Vapes contain formaldehyde increased 20%. Vaping can permanently damage your lungs increased 20%. And if I vape, I will deliver nicotine to my brain. This increased 16.6%. And as I noted earlier, we're currently in the midst of analyzing follow-up three data. And while not complete, the preliminary results show that exposure to some of the campaign ads is associated with agreement to specific campaign knowledge attitudes and beliefs. So this is very promising and we're encouraged by the initial preliminary results of follow-up three. So now I want to shift gears and give you updates on three additional youth prevention efforts. Fresh Empire, This Free Life, and the Real Cost Smokeless Prevention Effort. So let's talk for a minute about Fresh Empire. To refresh your memories, the Fresh Empire campaign specifically targeted African-American, Hispanic, Asian-American Pacific Islander youth who identify with hip-hop culture and values. This group is at higher risk for tobacco use in adolescents. The campaign adopted a peer-crowd approach using authentic aspirational messaging from trusted influencers to shift beliefs and perceived norms among hip-hop youth and encourage them to pursue their goals by living tobacco-free. The campaign involved broadcast media, engagement through digital and social media platforms, and local outreach over a four-year period. So our goals were to reduce cigarette initiation and experimentation among at-risk multicultural youth between the ages of 12 and 17. We also wanted to encourage these teens to reach their goals by emphasizing that they can embody hip-hop values and still be tobacco-free. So at the end of the evaluation, we found that the campaign had really high reach and high brand equity scores with messages that garnered positive receptivity to the ads among the hard-to-reach audience of hip-hop youth. Specifically, we know that we reached 71% of this audience, and our brand equity scores got as high as 87%, with perceived effectiveness scores between 3.5 and 4.1. The effort had a modest effect on changing tobacco attitude-related, tobacco-related attitudes and beliefs. The next campaign I want to update you on is This Free Life. And to refresh your memories on this effort, this campaign was based on a behavior change model that emphasizes building acceptance of the brand as a trusted and authentic source for information. The campaign featured aspirational messages and authentic influencers to encourage LGBT young adults to be tobacco-free. The campaign messaging delivered primarily through digital and social media over three and a half year period, with some out-of-home print ads, streaming radio, and local events in certain markets. So to recap, our goals were to reduce cigarette use among at-risk lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender young adults between the ages of 18 to 24. This was the first large-scale LGBT tobacco prevention campaign, and it sought to align positive aspects of living tobacco-free with shared LGBT values, experiences, and interests. Our results were that we achieved very high brand awareness and notably high brand receptivity across a very diverse population. Specifically, we were able to reach 69% of this audience with high brand equity scores and perceived effectiveness scores between 3.25 and 3.87. The campaign influenced a small number of outcomes associated with social perceptions of smoking, thus had a modest effect on changing tobacco-related attitudes and beliefs. Importantly, the final sample of over 12,000 LGBT young adults represents one of the largest and most diverse samples of this population ever collected. And finally, a few notes about the Real Cost Smokers Campaign. Just as a refresher, the campaign was based on a behavior change model among rural boys aged 12 to 17 throughout the United States. The campaign messaging was delivered through TV, digital, out-of-home, and radio. And our goals were to reduce smokeless tobacco initiation and experimentation among at-risk boys aged 12 to 17 in rural counties across the US. This was the first large-scale smokeless prevention campaign, and we used creative messaging to influence attitudinal and normative beliefs around the statement that smokeless doesn't mean harmless. From a result standpoint, the campaign was successful in reaching almost 90% of the intended rural boy teen audience. Also, several campaign targeted beliefs and attitudes increased significantly from baseline to post-campaign launch among older boys ages 12, pardon me, ages 14 to 16. Thank you for letting me share some updates on our current existing campaigns. FDA remains dedicated to educating the public, especially youth, about the dangers of tobacco use in keeping with the evolving tobacco marketplace. The agency has gained valuable real-time insight from these efforts and our ongoing evaluation studies to better understand the impact of advertising on changing behaviors. And FDA will utilize what we've learned to inform the next generation of our And FDA will utilize what we've learned to inform the next generation of our existing work and future public health education efforts. So we're going to continue to work towards driving down the current youth vaping rates. We're going to see how low we can take the current youth smoking rates. And we're also going to turn our attention towards a new effort to prevent the use of little-flavored cigars and cigarrillos. Research is currently underway among African-American and Hispanic youth. And so we're excited to see where this goes. And for a much more in-depth understanding of our evaluation results, you can hear from our colleagues at RTI International this Friday, February 26th, at 1:30. Anna McMonigal will be sharing the ongoing results from the Real Cost. Eric Crankshaw will be sharing the final results from This Free Life. And Jamie Guillory will be sharing the final results from Fresh Empire. Thank you so much for listening in on this special session. We're going to open it up for some live QA. Thank you.
Okay, I was told that when I was talking before that the sound was not going through. We hope that that problem has been solved. In the interest of time, we're going to go right to the questions. Todd Cecil and Kathy Crosby from CTP are joining me to answer some of the questions that have come in. And our questions are going to be asked by a colleague of ours in our Office of Health Communication and Education, Dave Berry. So Dave, over to you.
Great, we got a lot of questions. We're going to try our best to get to as many of them as we can. I'll start with the first one for Mitch. Are warning labels being developed for other tobacco products such as cigars, cigarrillos, hookah, and e-cigarettes?
Thanks for that question. There already is a nicotine addiction warning that is required for e-cigarettes and other ends products. For cigars and pipes, my understanding is that they are currently subject to warnings from the Federal Trade Commission, and possible FDA-imposed warnings are subject to some ongoing legal proceedings. So for now, those are subject to FTC warnings. If there are specific questions about cigar and pipe warnings, folks should contact the Federal Trade Commission for now.
Great, and I'm going to give the next one to you, Mitch, as well. We saw a number of questions on this topic, so I'm going to try to group them together. Questions about, does CTP regulate synthetic nicotine? Are products with synthetic nicotine products properly regulated as tobacco products, drugs, or neither? And how does CTP plan to handle products such as Puff Bar that say they contain tobacco-free nicotine? And I'll leave it at that for now.
Yeah, we saw that there were a lot of questions about synthetic nicotine and the recent news of Puff Bar. I hope folks will understand that as a regulatory agency, I can't go into specifics about anything that might be the subject of an ongoing investigation. And the synthetic nicotine question, while important, is also complicated. And basically, it comes down to our assessment on a case-by-case basis about how we would apply the statutory definition of a tobacco product to any case or any product before us. And with synthetic nicotine products, it could include a consideration of the presence of components or parts that might meet the statutory definition of a tobacco product. So it is not possible to give an across-the-board categorical answer to the regulatory status related to synthetic nicotine. But we know that there is a lot of interest in it, and we are very much aware of what Puff Bar is claiming on its website, and I will just leave it at that.
Great, thank you, Mitch. The next one, I'll direct at Dr. Cecil. And I believe this has to do with pre-market review. Will applicants be given time to generate data to address deficiency letters?
Applicants will have a period of time. That will be described in the deficiency letters you receive that will state here's how much time is available for a response. That time is limited, and if studies will have to be conducted, they'll have to be conducted in that short period of time. But that is the only way in which we can get these reviews done in the timeframe that we have.
Great, thank you, Todd. This next one is for Kathy. Why do the anti-vaping videos not mention that all of these toxic metals and more are inhaled in cigarette smoke as well? It is very important not to inadvertently encourage young people to smoke tobacco rather than use an e-cigarette, correct?
Yeah, and that's a great question. So what I didn't mention today is we also still have our very active cigarette prevention effort in the market at the same time. So the Real Cost cigarette prevention is out there as well as the e-cigarette prevention ads. And so we're really trying to focus distinctly on the different topics and the different products, but yet we're still messaging on the dangers of cigarettes. And so what we are seeing through not only our data but the surveillance data is that cigarettes are at historic lows. In fact, we went back to do research with teens who are at risk for cigarettes earlier this year, and we couldn't even find them. We literally had to stop the research because we are finding that it's fewer and fewer and fewer youth are even susceptible to smoking. And so while your point is really well-taken, I mean, we certainly don't want to drive youth from one product to another. We are messaging on the dangers of cigarettes as well and certainly focusing on the toxic chemicals you can inhale through smoking, which is over 7,000. So we're not letting that message go, but we're also focusing on e-cigarettes. So the goal through our research is to always look at unintended consequences, and we don't see anywhere that our e-cigarette messaging is driving kids to smoke cigarettes.
And if I could add to what Kathy has said, when we compare kids' understandings of the risks of cigarettes compared to the risks of e-cigarettes, we start at a baseline where kids understand, they may not know all of the risks associated with cigarette use, but they know that cigarettes are dangerous. By contrast, we start with misperceptions amongst many young people that e-cigarettes are harmless or safe. And so part of the approach that Kathy has laid out, all steeped in the evidence and the research that her folks have done, is to overcome some of those misperceptions that are present with e-cigarettes that we don't face with cigarettes.
And that's a great point, Mitch. Thank you for helping me phone a friend. One thing we do know from the belief statements around cigarettes is there already is incredibly high acceptance to the dangers. And so we're seeing belief statements that, you know, these are deadly, these are harmful, they can kill you, those type of belief statements, between 85% and 95% agreement. And so we always have to look to see where we can move beliefs. And so the dangers of cigarettes are really, really highly known at this point.
Great. I'm going to go ahead and combine two other questions that we saw a common theme for Mitch. Can you elaborate on the observation that use of disposable e-cigs increased in 2020 and whether that may be related to policy changes? And then a similar question, will FDA be updating its enforcement guidance in regards to prioritizing disposables?
Thanks for the question, and it's an important question. So let's go back to the January 2020 guidance, when we established the priorities for enforcement, starting with, based upon the data that we had from the 2019 surveys with concerns over flavors in cartridge and pod-based products. And so that was one of the priorities that we established. But understand that regardless of the product type and regardless of the flavors that are or are not present, we have enforcement priorities for any ends products where the manufacturers are not taking the steps that they should be to prevent youth access or where there is evidence of the targeting or marketing of the products to kids. Again, regardless of the type of product or the flavors present. And in my presentation, I walked you through, at a high level, some of the more recent enforcement actions that we've taken across the board there. But that was just in the last year. We have taken many of those actions, unfortunately, we've had to over the last number of years. So January of last year, and as you saw in the details that Todd provided, we were seeing very low kids' uptake of flavored disposable e-cigarettes compared to cartridge and pod-based products. But we put industry and everyone else on notice when we issued that guidance in January of last year that we would be monitoring the marketplace and we would be revisiting our enforcement priorities in light of any changes in any of the data that we saw over the course of 2020. And as everybody knows, unfortunately, we saw a significant increase in the use of flavored disposable products amongst current e-cigarette users between the ages of 12 and 17. And as soon as we had and were able to release that data, we announced that that was now a new enforcement priority for the agency, along with the others that I mentioned. And we have since taken some enforcement actions against flavored disposable products.
Great, next question, maybe I'll start with Dr. Cecil, but it really could be for anyone. Are the youth using flavored e-cigarettes also using tobacco? Or those who would be likely to take up cigarette smoking? Or is e-cigarette use diverting young people away from using tobacco?
I think those are a lot of questions that need to be asked and are being evaluated in the data that we've received. And I think that, you know, we gave you a sort of a snapshot of the data. I think that once you start talking to the path folks in the symposia there, you get a much better answer. They've been digging into it, and they really do understand all of the nuances of the data. So I sort of gave you the overview, but I don't think I can speak to whether or not how much the overlap between the cigarettes and the ends products are occurring, at least with the data that said that we looked at NYTS.
I think one thing that I can add to what Todd said is there isn't one type of kid that is experimenting with ends and progressing to regular use. And we know that there's a lot of dual use of both combustible and non-combustible products. A lot of kids who vape use other products. So it's not exclusively experimentation by kids who would otherwise have gone on to experiment with a cigarette. There are kids who are experimenting with these cigarettes, and this goes back to the misperceptions of the product safety, who might otherwise not have experimented with any tobacco product at all but for perhaps those misperceptions that e-cigarettes are safe. There are some surveys that show that there are some kids walking around thinking that they're uneven aware of the presence of nicotine in e-cigarettes. So I would say, without having numbers, think of the population of young people who are experimenting with e-cigarettes as representing just a cross-section of all different perceptions and patterns of use and behaviors. It's not exclusive to one or the other. I see that we are at time, but we can go over a few minutes. So Dave, we'll take one or two more questions before we have to wrap up.
Great, I'll try to group these together since we saw a number of questions about the September 9th pre-market deadline. So for some companies that filed PMCA's long before the deadline, the one-year period of enforcement discretion has expired. Does this mean that these companies are subject to FDA enforcement actions at the present time?
Yeah, I'll take that. And again, there's no general answer that we can give that's all going to be dealt with on a case-by-case basis. And recall, one part of the court order that we were able to get clarification on, and that is, and again, key point here is case-by-case. If the 12-month period for review has expired and on an application-by-application basis, progress is being made on reviewing the application, then the court said that we have the ability to extend enforcement discretion on a case-by-case basis at that point. So again, impossible to give an across-the-board answer. It will be dealt with on a case-by-case basis. Dave, why don't we take one more question?
Yep, this one I believe is pretty quick, so I'll go ahead. What was the science behind the non-enforcement of PMCA requirements for premium cigars?
It was a court order. So whoever asked that question, thank you for seeking that clarification. This was FDA announcing its compliance with a court order in litigation that was brought by cigar interests, where for now, so-called premium cigars, as defined in the order that the court issued, are for now exempt only from the pre-market submission requirement and that September 9th deadline if they would otherwise have been subject to the September 9th deadline. But they remain subject to all the other regulations by FDA. I think we need to stop there. Apologies for some of the technical issues that we experienced, but a big thanks to everybody running the conference and the SRNT leadership for doing this very, very creative approach to bringing over 1,300 people from all over the world together for the conference. FDA is a huge supporter of SRNT, and this is one of the most important conferences that we participate in every single year. We look forward to seeing you all safely next year in person. But for now, on behalf of the Center for Tobacco Products and the Food and Drug Administration, thank you all for attending this pre-conference session. Enjoy the rest of the conference as it's about to formally get underway. And again, we look forward to seeing you all in person next year. And with that, we will say goodbye, so thank you.